I'd have actually signed the sheet when it came around, not paying attention, but I abstain from that vote.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Public comment, we had no one sign up, uh, check registering bills. Does anybody have any questions over the financials for this month? You had a chance to review those. The sales tax was looking pretty good this month. Yeah, yeah, we're, we're up overall in each month, so yeah, the overall upward trend.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to the committee reports. Uh, Mr. Turner has his information in the packet, if you have any questions for him. Absolutely. I like seeing that. I talked to Mr. Turner today about that. Okay, on the difference of treated water, and I was also thinking we flushed hydrants as well. And, cause I was asking him, there's a little over a million gallons on the backside of that pay brick right there, Jack, yep. Uh, so anyway, Mr. Turner cleared that up for me, so. Alright. Mr. Bovis is in the packet. Chief Hounds is in the packet. Mr. Sullivan, you have anything to add on yours? Again, I do like how detailed you are on that. Alright. Nobody have any questions on them? If not, we'll move on to council liaison report. Mr. Fisher, library, school board? Alright. Park board, Ms. Schumberg.
Um, I'm sure everybody saw in the paper about the Hickey White breaking ground. That's pretty much, it was a nice article.
Yeah. Yeah, Hickey White broke ground and then we, uh, they got a new slide.
Pool, yeah, they got a new slide up at the pool.
Got a new slide at the pool and, uh, they didn't have too much storm damage or anything up there, so they got it. Park's looking real good.
I think that's really it.
Yeah. There's a lot of rain and a lot of grass, but they're doing alright. Um, they got a couple of summer events coming up that we'll talk about next month, but it's like mermaids at the pool and stuff like that, so. Uh, planning zoning, councilperson Freeman. Alright, thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh, zoning appeals, councilperson Ginever.
Uh, Mr. Sullivan tells me there's nothing for this month.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on anything related to the previous council meeting on April twenty-second? Alright, moving on. Old business, we have none. New business, we have approval for annual fireworks events for the Elks. Uh, Ms. Eisenbys, you're speaking on that?
Yes, uh, so this is the Elks', uh, annual Fourth of July festival. The date's in there, I think it's July sixth. Uh, and then the St. Pious is, I believe, Thursday, June twenty-eighth. Um, they're both their annual, uh, fire, uh, work festivals. I talked to both fire chief Bova and Chief Hounds and they'll handle their duties as they're supposed to.
They're good with Bova.
Yeah.
My heart.
Yeah.
Make a motion for approval for both events.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor to approve the fireworks shows? Say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second for the approval of the liquor license. All those in favor say aye. Any discussion? I guess I should've said that first, my bad. Any opposed? What is it? Yeah. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. That takes us on to... Our ordinances. Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill nineteen fifty-four dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please? Thank you. You're good. A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen fifty-four dash twenty twenty-four on its first reading by title only. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen fifty-four dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Second.
Alright, a motion has been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen fifty-four dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. Any discussion?
Go ahead. Yeah, this is just an agreement that allows, or we, for us to shut off the water if someone doesn't pay their sewer bill. Is that as simple as I understand that in my...
That's correct.
So, this is an ordinance saying, if someone doesn't pay their Jefferson County sewer bill, then we can't shut off their water.
That's correct. And I guess we needed an ordinance for that to come effect. Is it still? It's part of our agreement with, with the sewer district, right.
I guess, let's see, we can, we send in the water usage first, so they're gonna be our bill. We, their policy's a lot more lenient than ours. I think we're thirty days, thirty-eight days, something like that.
Thirty-nine, I believe. Alright, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll go ahead and pull the council. Uh, councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kimfer? Councilperson Ginever? Councilperson Freeman?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher?
Yes.
Councilperson Schumberg? Councilperson Winkelman? Alright, bill number nineteen fifty-four dash twenty twenty-four now becomes ordinance nineteen fifty-four dash twenty twenty-four. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill nineteen fifty-five dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen fifty-five dash twenty twenty-four by, on its first reading by title only.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen fifty-five dash twenty twenty-four on its first reading by title only. Any discussion? Alrighty. Ms. Eisenbys, you have the floor. We still think, like...
Electronic fingerprint machine that the state, they have a program that they get these out to municipalities, so we received one or are in the process of receiving one. This is legal and what they suggested that we do to maintain that machine now that we are going to get it. So, this will help us keep that machine up. If this program ever goes away, that everything supported by the state, these funds should be used to replace it, keep it up to date, new programs, things of that nature.
And it's only on criminal cases, or is it all cases before the municipal court?
Any money that gets brought downtown by a police officer.
Yeah, I guess, I guess if you're guilty and you have to pay a fine, then you're gonna pay two dollars on top of that.
On top.
Right now, we literally have the cards.
Yeah.
So, Sergeant Reese has worked on this, uh, with the state, provided up me all the information. I sent it to Brandon, he researched it for the other ordinance.
So, but a violation of the municipal, so if you don't cut your grass... And you get called into municipal court, you're gonna pay an extra two dollars to pay for the fingerprint machine. I, that's... I don't need it, I just...
I can clarify that.
I cut my grass.
All criminal cases and cases involving infraction and violation of a city ordinance, so yes. Yes. We gotta fund that machine somehow. I mean, I mean, right, I, I probably won't ever pay two bucks to help out, but...
And it looks like it's part of Missouri statute, too, correct?
Yeah, we were provided this, or the same ordinance by the state.
Yeah, I think so. Alright, any more further questions for Ms. Eisenbys? No. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen fifty-five dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please? A motion has been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen fifty-five dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll pull the council. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kimfer? Councilperson Ginever? Councilperson Freeman? Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Schumberg? Councilperson Winkelman? Alright, bill number nineteen fifty-five dash twenty twenty-four now becomes ordinance nineteen fifty-five dash twenty twenty-four. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Thank you, ma'am. Uh, moving on to the administrator's report. I believe you have that information sitting in front of you as soon as I can find mine. Alright, Ms. Eisenbys, you have the floor. You got a couple of discussion topics here.
Uh, we did not receive the Jefferson Foundation grant for Hickey White Park. Uh, so, with that, not receiving that grant, uh, left us out about a hundred and, I think I put in a hundred and ten thousand dollars for it. Which basically was going to pave the, the course, leaving us to spend our money on bathrooms. Uh, we weren't unsuccessful in that, so Mr. Turner's been working hard trying to get a list together. We pared down to find, to, to come up with a smaller footprint of a bathroom. It's basically a one stall. Uh, it'll be handpicked accessible. It'll have a, um, mechanical room for the lights and that stuff on, for the cords and everything. Um, it's quite a bit smaller, uh, than what the plan that was built. I think he's got some specs for, uh, to build it out of, uh, metal studs and, uh, steel or, like, you know, metal, uh, structure. And, so what we're asking is, do the council want to do that, um, and authorize me a certain amount of more money out of the levy fund to do that? Or do we go with Johnny on the spots? Do we go with no bathrooms? I think we'll have about fifty thousand extra, uh, based on what we budgeted, but on day one, jokers hit footings, foundations, all kinds of things where the courts are going to go. So, there will be some stabilization that they have to do. So, I'm not sure how much of that will be, you know, taken. Um, or how much over just the change orders we're gonna have to do to stabilize the ground. Um, based on what Dan sent letters out, dropped, actually went personally to Buckeye's Home Depot, uh, to try to get some material donated. We know we can pour the slab. Mr. Freeman's agreed to plumb it for free. So, I think we can get there at a very reasonable price. I just don't know if I can get there with what I have left. Uh, so it's kind of the council, if they wanna give me, you know, twenty-five thousand more, I don't know. I don't know what it's gonna take, but we won't have any bathrooms there as of right now.
We have, we have to have the bathrooms.
Yes.
We can't have the park without bathrooms, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, well... Levy fund, which has a little over a million in it right now. Well, it's stormwater. It's stormwater. It's the eighty fund, stormwater levy.
How much, how much money do we spend on the doghouse?
Three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
We, we can...
Not, not the bathrooms in the park.
No, so I had, uh, I put in for that grant and I had a really good, I had a really good feeling about it, uh, cause I talked to Dan, the new president out there. We were putting in money. I didn't ask very much, but the pavement that the, the kids are going to be playing on, their goals or who's they were playing. And I really thought that was the key. That was kind of where I was led to go. Uh, we read a, we wrote a really good, or Chuck D. wrote a really good, um, submission and, I don't know, it didn't say anything, just weren't approved. I, I didn't send a very nice email back, but...
It was good.
Kind of just super disappointed, because if, I, if there was ever a project that met the definition of the foundation and what they're supposed to support, I thought this was it. You know, I get not paying for parking lots or bathrooms or lights.
When, when we, when we do it, I would suggest that we do it with a kind of a plan of, if we, we get funding later, that we've already got the infrastructure to add on.
And we could build a bigger bathroom. It, it depends on what you guys wanna authorize me to do.
Well, it also...
We tear it down, so we could at least get one there.
It also depends on, if we have fifty thousand dollars and they don't have to spend very much to stabilize that ground, then there's no extra money needed.
If we get somebody to donate a lot of the material.
Right.
And I know our guys can pour the slab. Uh, we can hook on the sewer, it can be, you know, free plumb. We can, we can handle some of that.
We just, moving forward, I mean, what do you wanna authorize or... That's fine. I'll entertain a motion to approve, Ms. Eisenbys, to spend thirty thousand dollars for a bathroom above and beyond what we have. Right. Come back to the council.
I don't see jokers needing all that, but I, I don't know. I was down there today and they're pulling out footings.
Right. And they gotta back it in. That could eat up what he... Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to, alright, for thirty thousand dollars for Hickey White Park. Alright, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you for that. Ms. Eisenbys, next.
The second, uh, item I have to discuss is the zip code issues that we have around town. Uh, Mr. Turner has, uh, taken off on this project as well. And so the easiest, we've had several Zoom calls. Um, we've been going at this for, or I think we're at it probably a year and a half, and, and I turned it over to Dan a couple of months ago. We've been working on it for quite a while. The easiest way to explain this is, they don't care what the preferred last line is. If it says Festus, Crystal City, Peeveley, whatever. They want those last numbers, six-three-oh-two-eight, six-three-oh-one-nine. That's what they have. That's, when you start messing with that, it really changes everything. And the hospital is alluded to that, too, as Rick and John are aware. This way, they'll send a letter out, your zip code stays the chain, the same, but your preferred last line changes. So, it can be Crystal City, six-three-oh-two-eight. So, I guess it will be, and we've talked to the hospital, they're, they're okay with this. This is a much better way. Nothing changes.
It's a good question. To the mail. He's talking about sales.
Well, that could be affected now, because it's a six-three-oh-two-eight.
It's already going towards...
Well, I don't, I don't think it'll mess with that, because the zip codes you're in is going to dictate your taxes, which, which is different. I mean, the hospital is taxing that entity, but...
Which as of...
And this is the way the post office is, prefers we do it. This is the simplest way to do it. This is where it doesn't really cost anybody. They just take, they'll get a letter, a formal letter from the post office. Your preferred last line is now Crystal City, six-three-oh-two-eight. Um, so a lot will be able to, you know, get places like the hospital recognized, they're in Crystal City now.
St. Pious.
And there's, there's people up on the north end as well.
Uh, starting at Holdinghausen, uh, house on the corner is all. So, I mean, we...
I can, I can check into that. It, it doesn't, I don't know how that would change anything now.
And they're in a medical office in the hospital, and it gets delivered, we're not getting that use tax, six-three-oh-one-nine, they're getting it six-three-oh-two-eight.
They wouldn't get it either, though, because they don't have that on the books, but regardless, I mean, that's, that's the way.
It's nonprofit, so.
I mean, they're...
Red and mercy nonprofit, so they wouldn't pay tax anyway. Right, I mean, I mean...
I mean, you start getting into changing zip codes to benefit tax-wise, then that's way out of the...
They would shut the hospital's cash flow for one year, to change your zip code, basically. It would shut them down for almost one year cash flow, change that zip code.
And that's where it stopped at, because Mr. Eisenbys did this about five, six years ago, and the hospital kind of shut everything down. And, so now this is the workaround, because we're pretty adamant on wanting any of those industries, industries on Airport Road to, say, Crystal City.
And we went, we went and met with the new president of the hospital probably a month ago, talking about the old way. Just made sure that they were still, you know, with what we had learned a couple of years ago. Then we had the Zoom call with this guy a week later, and then we called Dan, who's the president of the hospital again, and he said, I think I can work with that. So, that's just more, yeah. There's a process that the post office will take now.
Do you need a motion to...
I don't know if they have to. Um, basically what he sent us by email is those two bullet points? That, the process that takes place.
It'll be Festus zip code and Crystal City.
But the preferred last.
It's supposed to, yes.
So, this happens all over St. Louis, I think the city, everybody's doing this.
Yeah, he was talking about Independence and the method of, I guess, the suburbs of Kansas City. There's like... Three or four towns that have like three or four zip codes all under Kansas City's zip code. But they went the route to change your preferred last line, to Independence, even though it may be a Kansas City zip code.
Right.
So.
I just wanted to say Crystal City.
Right, I mean, I... Well, you look at the Hardy sign in the lobby, that says nine hundred Airport Road, Festus.
Right.
I don't like that.
No, absolutely not.
We've done way too much work.
We definitely want that to say Crystal City.
Right.
Right, any of our businesses out there, I mean, I'd like the hospital, I'd, St. Pious.
Crown Plastics?
There, yeah, Crown.
I'd rather have them here. Um, actually, Getera Tools is the one that started this four or five years ago. Cause they had, they have always been under Crystal City. UPS, which they're, was in their neighborhood, started charging them for mislabeled packages, because they're actually in Festus zip code. So, Getera Tool called, called me when I started this. John and Rick were still working on the hospital, uh, since when I started this, is that why?
Well, I'll entertain a motion to do the preferred last line. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. That was a good two, two topics there. Yeah, you did two good things there. I like that. Alright, I'll give you a little moment to continue reading through that. If you have any questions. Yes, they're doing, that's... They're supposed to start on the twenty-eighth, day after holidays, so a week from today, tomorrow.
And then that should take a week or month, but...
About thirty days, I think, thirty, forty-five days.
Overall, ninety days and then thirty days for that one section and sixty days for the others.
The, the Spencer is wanting to have that all paid before school starts.
Right.
So, we're, we're trying to, I don't think that intersection, if we can get some dry weather. If it'll stay dry, it shouldn't take terribly long, but that's, that's all for those intersect, uh...
Those are not gonna start until...
Right, and, because I had talked to Spencer and told him they could work, you know, south.
Right.
But they wanna get their miller there, do everything at one time, so it doesn't make any sense for them to start, hit that intersection and, because I'm gonna give, they could pay this mill and then pay, but logistically, it doesn't make sense, I guess.
So, that's a victim month or so.
Yeah, uh, hopefully, if they have good weather. I don't know what their contract might have been, ninety days, but I think they're saying like thirty-four. Good, it's a good improvement. Anybody?
I got something for Dan. I'm, who's working on this, uh, roof management, they're, they're doing it. Uh, the one we got, we just bought a different system with you got. Our, uh, pickups, our cars, everyone's working great, heavy equipment. They do not like to communicate. They did have many systems on the heavy equipment now, uh, tracking stuff. A lot of us built in, that's built in, you may not know it.
Oh, yeah, well, they're...
They do not communicate.
Yeah. He hasn't said anything. We sent him the li, I signed the contract and sent him the list of these.
Uh, we did, we did the same thing. Has it all on, it'd be, be, be just fine. But we have contracts on some stuff and everything, so, yeah. Yeah, the sales one was really good.
Well, see, he asked if I didn't want things like when blades are down or the brooms are down, truck, or...
Absolutely, we get all that.
I just know, I just, vehicle makes, you know, where they have speed.
Marsa, if your speed, if your seatbelt ain't clicked, it, everybody, everybody.
Well, hopefully it does the equipment, cause that's one of the, like if... No. Cause I'm interested in the snowplows, the street sweep, like if something gets stolen, tobacco, we can locate it and that's... Well, hopefully we get that. No, that's a good topic. Thank you. Alright, um, moving on to mayor's report. Uh, I think you guys, did you guys get the email on the park board appointment? I just let you guys look at that to see if you guys, you know, do a little research on that. If not, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Jonathan Wulard to the park board. Yeah, it's just Jacob Masser resigned and then, uh, Jonathan Wulard, he lives at, uh, Twain on Taylor Avenue. He teaches at Festus.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Then...
Do I need to make a motion?
Perfect. Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Alright, uh... Alright, uh, does anyone in the audience wanna speak on anything they've heard so far in this meeting today? No? Alright. Uh, I wanna personally thank the fire and police for their commitment to the school, uh, during graduation. Mr. Friedmeier, the flag is always amazing. Our graduation went really good, and, uh, I appreciate the police, fire, and it went really well. So congratulations to our twenty-four graduates. I think school year wrapped up on, for Crystal, Friday.
Yep.
So we are gonna be summer school starting in two weeks, Ms. Schomburg.
June third.
Alright, so. Alright, let's go ahead and go roundtable. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemfer? Councilperson Ginever?
Um, I got an email, actually, Mary and I, and they copied Jason and the mayor, got an email from, uh, Pam Portell, um, cause she read the article about how we had all this money for the streets, and, uh, had, it's spent money on the streets. And she reminded us that there are some streets on the other side of sixty-one, sixty-seven, that is Crystal City, uh, in particular her house, which is on Ozark Drive and, and, uh, Ward Terrace. Um, is there anything that we can say about, you know?
I think Ozark and Ward Terrace is in pretty good shape.
Comparatively to the rest of the city, I guess.
Compared, and, and that's one of the things that we.
I didn't really look at it, so.
Heavy traffic versus other roads, so I mean, the road itself doesn't have a lot of bottles or.
There's no sidewalks over there?
No sidewalks.
No, there aren't.
Having even sidewalks.
Right.
I think so.
The in-house, right by the, between churches, uh, the church and like, somewhere, that's really bad. Yeah.
That's, oh, I've tried to send them letters, get them to look at it.
Can we put, cause there is a big puzzle now. I know it's not ours.
We've had a whole orchard today, probably tree broke tomorrow, and we can get the rest of them Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay.
Got a dead list of people calling the best of the week, so.
Alright.
Um, regarding that article, so are we considering expanding our street projects, like this year or next year?
Uh, expanding or just following, we have a plan.
Well, spending more money on them.
Um, if something comes up, I mean, if there's money there, we can, but it's, I mean, with our budget, I mean, we just, we added three hundred and fifty, I don't, I don't remember exact numbers, I don't have them in front of me, but we just added on top of.
Seven fifty thousand this year, two hundred and three fifty.
Yeah, so we just added, that, that article's about, we added four hundred K to the streets from the use tax fund.
Okay.
So that's now, like, it's already been spent for this year, that's what.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I mean, if.
Next year, we have the sidewalk for school grant, which is on Taylor Avenue. So next year, it's pretty well spoken for, too. And then we gotta catch that back to.
Well, then in twenty twenty-seven.
Then in twenty twenty-seven, in Taylor Avenue, so it's, we can, we can try to live over there and see what we can do. The biggest thing I also looked at when I seen your email, and I, my apologies for not responding, I've been working on something else, several others.
No, it's okay, I just wanted to know that we talked about it.
I think, I think we can get something done up to where you make the ride into, what is that?
Uh, Ozark.
Ozark and that.
Yeah.
That's the worst part.
Yeah.
You're.
That water running down.
Where you turn off the water, that's the thing to do at work. So we, we can probably get, get something done there. It's not gonna make it very happy, or maybe that's not cool overlay out, so. You know, we have these grants that come into play that.
You know, I, I think that's probably it, cause it seems like we always concentrate on where, where we can get grants, and the other streets just keep on getting worse and worse and worse. I, I think we really need to blend a little bit of it, you know, the priorities to the streets that really need it, instead of the ones that get the grants, so.
Well, that's what we did on this year's with our other additions going.
Yeah, we can, so, it just kinda depends on the grant and what we have, like, I don't think next year we'll have the ADA grant, because we're pretty much out of room, but then we're not, you know, we follow those up to pay down here next year. Most of our money's committed to the grant on sidewalk schools grant, so it's really a balancing act, and it's, I mean, we don't have very much pro tax money, we never have, we've been working with hundred grants for twenty years. We just have, that's why we always did the eighty, twenty grants, cause we're paying twenty cents on the dollar. And you're exactly right, we're talking about this for ten, twelve years.
Yeah, and we all concentrate on the.
Right. Well, you're paying twenty cents on the dollar, it's hard to.
Right, but.
If you get two hundred thousand dollars to do a million dollars worth of work.
Right.
You want to spend your two hundred thousand dollars to get a million dollars.
And the other streets are tougher, you gotta.
I mean, we're working on that, though, because now we, with our phases, I mean, you had alternate one, two, and three, both getting done this year, and that wasn't covered under a grant, to my knowledge, correct?
And then maybe some allegations depending on where that, you know, where we end up at, so.
Right, so we're headed up by the park without a grant, so that, that use tax will start, I mean, we can pick and choose on that, on where we go with it, so I mean, it's, we are working on that.
Even if we got a patch made, Chestnut is horrible. If you, it's so many water cuts and just different things in Chestnut, it's.
Oh, there are some really bad streets, yeah.
Yeah, and I.
Especially more than one.
Yeah.
Turner, got that on your list? Perfect. Mr. Ginever, anything else? Alright, Councilperson Friedmeier?
Um, I got a call from a constituent, uh, Borgeson, eight, uh, street lights out. I talked to Mr. Turner, and he said he's got a whole list of them that, uh, they're trying to get U E to fix, so I just, she asked me if, uh, I could bring it up, so I'm bringing it up, just, just for that reason.
Alright.
And I have one more thing. Uh, I don't know if all of you heard or not, but, uh, the city of Herkey, they lost a great man in, in Bill Hager. Yeah, I'd like to send my condolences to his family. This had, would have been his thirtieth year on the fire engine rally. He's the only one that's ever done it. And he was a former mayor, but he's gonna be greatly missed, and I just wanna.
Hmm, thank you. Yeah, but Bill, he, he, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Bill passed away.
Yeah.
Friday, I believe.
Last Friday, but, uh, it was a bit of a shock, but, and he was looking through his thirtieth year, cause he'd been doing it every year.
Well, thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, I, I know what I think was saying, I know Bill for a long time, and he's a great guy. I thought the world of him. Uh, and additionally, uh, I'm, I'm on the, uh, Twin City Days Board or Council, whatever it is, and, uh, they came to me and said, uh, what are you guys gonna do for the mayor's challenge this year?
I haven't responded to that email.
I said, uh, you are gonna do something that, that the mayor is really good at.
Yeah, we picked something for me. I, I'd like to win one.
So I told him I would bring it up at the meeting and find out, you know, we're gonna find out what he's best at. That's what we did.
I don't know. I'm good at talking. But, yeah, I'll, we'll keep that in mind.
Little skid loader, rodeo or something.
I, we could do something like that. We could go, we could do. Yeah, we could pick up stuff, load a little trash.
Definitely not baseball.
Okay, now, listen, the, they were pitching too slow. Did you see my fielding, though? Fielding was on point. Golden glove.
Just based on that comment, we're gonna move on from baseball.
We're moving on, we're moving on. Ms. Schomburg, you have anything, minus those derogatory comments about my baseball?
Baseball swing, yeah. Yeah, I'm concerned about the, I'm super pumped about the Hickeywood Park and like, the direction it's going in, but I'm really concerned about the homeless situation back there. And I know that the heat's coming up, and I know, I feel like we're all just kinda like, not scared, but I just feel like we're gonna, eventually gonna have to address it. And I'm, I just think we need to get ahead of it, and.
I know they are working on it.
Talking like about these bathrooms and stuff.
So you probably will have some ordinances coming up regarding agencies, people sleeping in the park, things of that nature. We are actively working on the homeless situation internally.
And I know.
Attorney, we have some sergeants, we have the chief of police. We're getting calls, some people, some of us will help us, some people, your larger ones, you think would care, don't care.
Right.
Uh, so there's, there's a lot of issues here in terms of when we move them, probably they're not supposed to be. Where are they going for this move, somebody else is probably on it. They're getting worse, they're starting to say business doorway, clean businesses, but it's broken. But we are actively working on it, but they, they do have rights.
Right, well, and I'm, I'm aware of that, and I know that we're working on it, because I know that, you know, I've seen the picture of the things that, that we see on the police department fund to help that situation. I'm just, it's a concern of mine.
And can, uh, federal property, like the levy?
No, so we had posted, it's one sign's down, so we take steps, and one step forward for us.
Two steps.
And two steps backwards.
The trash down there, we go down, with the fire department, you go down there, it is horrible. I mean.
All the time.
I am, I know last week.
So, that's when you get the attorney involved, and you can't, I'm, I'm the same way, let's take the skid steers and bathrooms down, we have all of us, and we've got we can't do that.
Can't, can't, you can't clear, like, I know they stay down there cause they can hide, like, can you clear area where?
We can mow it.
Talk to the levy or to the chorus, and you have to, there's land service permit.
Right.
All the, there's a whole lot of just.
If we can mow, you don't have to do that, like, if we go in with a big flamboyant and just mow all the trees up, you don't have to do anything, but then. Then you just gotta take over the field.
But then they're right, they're gonna catch out.
And I think that's why it's a problem now, those big floods back there, so they had, had nowhere to go, so that's why we're seeing it more and more these past three weeks, because I just opened levigates this morning, so I'm sure they'll start tripping back into.
Well, I saw pictures today, which I'm sure you guys did, from the police. I mean, they have encampments back there, and, uh, I mean, they are coming out in our businesses, they're causing disruption, but we gotta be careful not to, they have civil rights, same as us, so.
And if, if, if we move them out from behind Walmart, which is primarily where they are, where are they gonna go?
You know what, I, at least a couple of times a week, I have homeless people coming into my place, wondering if they can use a bathroom. So, I mean, see, and that's been only in the last three or four months.
And, and our neighboring city is not nearly that free.
Uh?
Our neighboring city is one of these directions, isn't helping.
Yeah.
They haven't been willing to so far.
Yeah.
Well, we.
We're doing a lot of these things.
Well, it's getting worse, so we are going to have to, and we are slowly trying to take steps, convenient on the eighteen. James O'Brien, police again, bringing up research on, we're trying to do this.
The right way.
The legal way, but also have some compassion for these people as well.
Right.
Uh, we're gonna give them help or direct them somewhere for church, they're not really.
You can have a ton of compassion for other people, and you know, I get, they need somewhere to go, I get that. But I believe Farmington did something, and you wanna talk to Farmington about that, they did something out of the back part, and it turned it into a big mess.
Well, they ran the paper not too long ago, that church. That church, they might have related to, they tried the same thing, and all this back part, but most of these people. They're going somewhere.
Well.
They put a dumpster down there, but I don't think they use it. Well, I mean, for the trash, it's just unreal.
Well.
So we are working on it, we're going to be a very small project.
I know, I wanted to go in.
No, thank you. It's, it's been a concern for.
They're actually in first hand today, I had a call.
Have, have you seen any?
I seen them firsthand today, I had a call, chief, this is a problem. They, they were dealing with them all day today.
If, if you help, like, I let them come in and use the bathroom, I felt sorry for them, now they're coming, like I said.
Or taking them in.
Hawking such, or tall people, well, you can go, they go to the house, but now they're in their bathroom, so now they.
Well, yeah, I mean, I was in McDonald's, and there was a half dozen, and I never seen.
Yeah.
Well, we are getting new, and, and.
They're newer, and lady in McDonald's, which is kinda supportive, it's definitely, now, I'll fill that cup up, you're not dying.
Yeah.
Well, the police are aware of it, and they're working on it. Jason's aware of it, and we're working on it, so.
I know we're working on it, it's just my concern, like, when we put money into this bathroom.
One more.
Right.
Rooms or something.
Have you noticed some down in the dump? Because I know the gates opened a bunch.
I have not.
Yeah, cause I know a lot of contractors are starting to really go in there and use it. Well, they're putting that, they put it on Facebook that, hey.
The contractors, huh?
Yeah. They even put on there, hey, I know where you can dump your limbs, dump them in Crystal City. No, we don't want you dumping them.
Well.
I've done it before.
Well.
I haven't in two months.
Well, we, we do lock that gate every evening, and.
Yeah, they lock it about two forty-five.
I know we talked about, I have not called anybody, we haven't seen anybody doing something.
Um, that's for residents, so.
I know Chief Pogel, he's a couple of contractors down there.
Yeah. From Festus.
Okay.
He, he followed him up from Pogelenos, he's seen him coming across, and he.
Right. Well, that's, alright, Ms. Schomburg, anything else? Okay. Councilperson Winkelman? Alright, thanks, sir. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.